Do we have a public comment from the public? Do we have a public comment from the board? No? I don't have any report. Other than what we're carrying out. So, we have warrants on the table to review and approve and align our transfer.
We do have a line item of transfer and this is a follow-up to the presentation that Mr. Long, uh, Mr. Long, sorry, Mr. Long. Mr. Spadafino made in his update last meeting about the response to the requests from the seniors and this was put in last year, just about the entryway and walking around the building and those types of things. And as you will recall, Mr. Spadafino looked into that and what he would have proposed is that seniors with senior privilege could be provided one of our pass cards that would get them into the building. They still need to check into the office. It would only be operational until 9:25. After that period of time, everybody still needs to come in the front door, but that would give them the opportunity to address some of the concerns. And the faculty and Mr. Spadafino felt as an added benefit of this is it's somewhat an opportunity to practice some of the conditions that when they go, for those going off to colleges, they have to be responsible for those cards and their access to their dorms as well as other buildings. And so, they felt in some regard it was a nice transitionary opportunity. But to do that, because it wasn't in the budget, they need $400 that they would transfer out of high school general school supplies into high school office supplies. And that changes the various amounts for each one of those respectively. But by moving the money out of the high school general school supplies, they noted that they won't be purchasing another order of colored paper. So whatever colored paper is in the high school, that's it. Conservative. Won't be anymore because we're getting key cards if the school committee approves this for the seniors. So...
Oh, colored paper for key cards.
Your signature on this really acknowledges that you're, you feel like this is a good approach and you approve the transfer.
Okay. We don't need to make a motion, do we?
Uh, no.
You can just sign it.
Just sign it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless you want to make a motion, unless there's some discussion about it.
No, no. Do we have any discussion? We talked, we already, right. Okay. Do we have minutes to approve?
We don't.
Okay.
We don't. We'll have the minutes next time.
So it's just...
For both meetings.
For both? Okay. From this one and the, okay.
Yeah. We're just down one from the last one.
Right. Okay. And that's already, that's on here.
And that was a long meeting.
And that was televised, so...
It was.
So, onto the superintendent's report.
Yes. Oh, what a fabulous weekend. Oh, my goodness. Congratulations to the seniors. Elijah represents the seniors here, right? And for winning the float competition. The floats were all just spectacular. I am always so grateful that I don't have to judge the floats because they do an amazing job. And I know how hard all the students work on it and such great support from parents and teachers and people that provide barns in order to put these things together and those kinds of things. And I don't want to go into too deep a detail there because maybe Elijah would like to follow up, but I just want to acknowledge the time and commitment and the creativity that goes into that. And also, boy, the student council did such a nice job putting together the rally and the parade. It was one of the longest parades we've seen though, so much participation. Great to see so many members of each class come out and watch the fight, the floats and the bands and the cheerleaders. It was just a great women's day. Always most enjoyable. So, and I know Ms. Giles, who's our school photographer this year, took lots of great pictures. I had posted some of my not-so-great pictures initially and, but we put up a link today. It does work. I noticed that some folks said that they couldn't seem to get in. It's case-sensitive for the login, so if you just, you know, be careful. You can get them and you can see all those great photos. And we sent off some to the ledger for the unlucky folks at home that might not have been able to join us that day. And congratulations to the PTO on a really great miles for miles. That was another, you know, two days, a whole weekend of just fabulous Lunenburg community events. Great participation on both of those days and lots of fun. The MCAS results are out. I did make, I did make some color copies of the results. I know this is all online for everyone. And as I talked to the reporters today, you know, as we've talked about in the past, this is, these results are the Next Generation. The first, the baseline, the initial results given a brand-new assessment. And not only a brand-new assessment, but a brand-new assessment that the majority of all of our students, in fact, the vast majority of our students as well as the students across the Commonwealth have taken online on a computer, which is different than taking an assessment paper and pencil. And of course, the third grade did take their assessment paper and pencil. And at the high school, the 10th grade level, that was a traditional, it was the legacy. That's better than calling it the old MCAS, but the legacy MCAS was what the high school students received. So this will continue, these changes will continue to all now into the high school level by 2019. And by that date, too, the state's intent is that all students will be taking the MCAS online. I know when we had to file our choice, it was an interesting way to file a choice of whether you were going to do it online or paper because basically the choice was do it online or get a waiver to do it paper, pencil and go through documenting why you couldn't be able to do it online. And our IT folks do a really great job of making sure that we have the devices as well as that infrastructure in order to make that happen for folks. But I'm sure during budget season, we'll hear some more about that as we continue to develop our program and our access to technology across the district. And you might recall that's in our strategic plan as well. So, just some highlights around this is the high school does get an accountability rating this year and they're a Level 1 school, which is the highest level that you can get. The other schools because are not, there's no level. It still says the primary school, there's insufficient data because the primary school only has kindergarten, first and second grade, and obviously there aren't any MCAS assessments at that level. So, the reason that there's no level relative to Turkey Hill and Turkey, and Turkey Hill Elementary and the Lunenburg Middle School, there's no level rating this because we did participate in the Next Generation online and so that put us in a no-change situation. So, it's just set aside for this year, basically. I gave you these, there's not annual comparisons for most of the grade levels anymore, simply because it's moved to a new assessment and so there, you can't compare. It's like apples and oranges comparing. So the only time that you will see actual comparisons are if you were to, you see the old assessments in here, they're marked 16, 17. The numbers above the bars just show you. So, the legacy MCAS results are on that first handout that I gave you as well as the Next Generation results. But they're not put side by side because you can't compare the new Next Generation MCAS results to the legacy results. But they're available, in case you want to do that. But I don't advise it because it's apples and oranges. But you can do it with regard to the high school information because those assessments didn't change. And what you see in the high school is some real nice gains with regard to the number of students that are in the advanced level. So, a strong performance by the students at the high school, given how the state has talked about the MCAS up to this point in time. Level 1 is very important, obviously, but we know that's on its way out because that's the legacy test. The other important thing I provided you, just so you see it, because I know that you have, you talk to parents and we want you to have the information you, we always say, send them to us, but you also need to be informed about the changes. And so, I'm providing you the parent and other that the state has provided that we'll be sending out to all parents in advance of sending those results home. Those won't go out for a couple of weeks. So overall, there's much positive here, but there are definitely areas that we're going to focus on. I saw some good indications in some math areas and I was happy to see that because we've been working on math for a couple of years. It's been an area, we've been refreshing particularly at the primary and the elementary level as one of the areas that we've spent dollars renewing the curriculum materials that they're using. And so, I saw some good signs there. We definitely have some areas here we want to look more closely at. I think that the teachers, just like we did with our initial MCAS results over 20 years ago, are going to find these rich with information so we can continue to strengthen our program and make sure that we're aligning well with the expectations for a degree. And I know the committee's aware that we have been working for the last couple of years in a pretty intense effort to get all of our curriculums aligned with the new standards. And that's going to be critical in terms of student performance. This particular assessment, the Next Generation MCAS, is really, they've really worked diligently to have the progressions from year to year, not have the peaks and valleys that we've seen in the assessment. So, setting those standards, so when students are completing that third grade level, when they're meeting expectations, there's an acknowledgement that they're prepared to go on into fourth grade. So that, it gives you more of the predictability about the preparedness to go to the next grade level. So that's what the educators, working with the folks at the DESC, really worked hard looking at making that Next Generation MCAS so you wouldn't have the performance levels that you saw sometimes, that variability in the old legacy test where one year your child might be scoring very high and then the next year all of a sudden it goes down. The score goes lower. And you saw that, right, in the corals, different things. So, that is part of what was addressed in the Next Generation MCAS. So that's something to be highlighted. The middle school growth ratios, the median growth, student growth continues to be very strong. You know, you want that at 40 and up. And they're, certainly their growth scores are still in that high 60 range, which is really great growth. We want to keep going on our curriculum renewal. I think class size and the sports for struggling students, two areas that our curriculum, our strategic plan is focused upon, definitely play out in this data as we've seen that. And we're going to continue to drill down on these pretty significantly. So, you have lots of information here. We, I know the principals will be talking about this as they go about developing their budgets because all of this, in addition to the strategic plan, will be utilized as we talk about what are the needs and how will we bring focus our attention this next year. I know we have a relatively extensive agenda in tonight, so I'm prepared to go on for several more minutes if you'd like, or I can pause there and answer any questions you might have and give you a chance to continue to look at these and send me emails or maybe schedule another session to talk about them in more detail. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, no burning questions at this point in time, since you just were able to see them today? But I did put them together. As I said, you can drill down some more on these at the website, but I thought having the hard copies and in color would be helpful for you as well. The other thing I wanted to acknowledge, the letters will be going out soon, but 28 of our seniors will be receiving the notice that they have been qualified to receive the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. It's great to see so many of them qualify for that. And that scholarship, they modified. It used to be for tuition. Now, depending upon which state school the students may go to, they get between $740 to $1,575 per year for four years towards their student charges. So they've restructured it to give students the capacity to use those dollars some other way. So, it's an important letter for those receiving them. They're advised to make a copy and keep both the original and a copy in a safe place where you can find it. So, when you register and are accepted into a state school, if that's what you decide, you can get that credited to your account. So congratulations to all those students. I think that's the superintendent's report. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. We did it beforehand, but for the public, I wanted to introduce Mr. Michael Casti, who's our business manager and HR director. We welcome Mike to our school community and to the Lunenburg community. He's been on the job now almost one full week, isn't it?
Seven days.
Seven days. Exactly. Exactly. And he's got a lot done in that time and we're just very happy to have him here as part of our team.
Thank you. It's, I have been here seven days and it's been, it's been an interesting seven days. I've had an opportunity to meet all the staff members at the professional development workshops that were going on last week. I've met with all the principals individually to go over their budgets and their staffing and what we're studying to develop, next year's budget as well. I just want to say it's, it's an honor and a privilege to serve the residents and the educators and the parents and the, and the students in the Lunenburg Public Schools. As I walk around, I'm so impressed with how hardworking our staff is and it's, it's going to be great to join that team, support them and support our students. So, thank you and I look forward to working with the school committee, too.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah, it's great.
Okay. Student rep report, Elijah.
Hi. So, yeah, as the superintendent called, this past weekend was homecoming, which ran really, really smoothly this year. Yeah, everything from start to finish just carried through the way the student council intended for it to. Homecoming's always such a great time for the students in particular because we're able to come together as classes and just work and brainstorm together and spend a lot of time with people. We don't typically, just because we don't share classes together or on different sports teams, so it's a really good time for the classes to connect with one another. I feel like this year in particularly, the floats were all very impressive and I think it was very hard to judge, but the seniors ended up coming in first with their float of Winnie the Pooh and then the juniors in second with their float of Curious George. We were also able to acknowledge and honor our two homecoming marshals for the year, which were Mr. Kaya Johnny and Ms. McCullough. So that was very exciting to be able to do. And then tonight, we have the boys' senior night. It was actually started at 6 o'clock. And then tomorrow, we have the girls' field hockey senior night at 7, I believe, also. Parent-teacher conferences are coming up next week, Thursday, October 26th, and then the following week, November 1st at 11:00 a.m. And that's pretty much it.
Do you have any idea when we're signing up for these parent-teacher conferences?
You know, they released that, that, what is it?
The time.
Just that the, I don't know exactly when they're going out, but I'm sure it'll be soon, given that it's next week for us to be able to sign up. I'll check now. I'll check and get that information out.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, Elijah.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we're onto new business, Mr. Short.
Mr. Short.
Is everybody doing their thing?
Our list of math results coming in. MCAS, Mr. Short, and of course, our ice hockey coach here for the Waterville Valley trip.
Yeah. So, I think we're going on like 10-plus years that we've gone to Waterville Valley or close to that. The itinerary is exactly the same. We leave on Friday afternoon, right after school. We'll check in to the hotel, have team dinners, practices, get up in the morning, and then follow the same type of routine practices, team meetings, all throughout the day, and then get up the next morning and head back. The purpose of the trip is for, obviously, ice hockey, but it's, the bigger piece is the team bonding and cohesion, especially since we're two schools combined, Air Shirley and Lunenburg. It's fully funded by the Booster Club. There's no cost, no additional cost to anybody that's playing. We will take a motor coach, the rooms, food, other than snacks and like an upgraded breakfast. There's no cost to any of the players. We've had great success up there. I don't know if you've ever been up to Waterville Valley, but it's the perfect place for a trip like that because it's, there's a little bit of freedom, but we're pretty much isolated in one place between hotel, the rent and the little comm here. So it's a perfect, perfect spot for this type of trip. So we're, you know, just hoping to go up again this year and have another great trip.
Yeah. We always hear from the hotel after these trips about how great the students are. They're always sent a letter saying we welcome you back next year. They give us a lot of pride in terms of how they conduct their sessions there. And we really appreciate all the time that Mr. Short and the other adult chaperones give because it's a long weekend for everyone, right? So, what's the date again of the Friday that you're going?
It'll be the 1st of December this year.
December 1st.
Is that early or no?
It's hockey, winter sports always start the Monday after Thanksgiving and this trip is always that Friday. So, time-wise it's up, but I think Thanksgiving's a little bit earlier or just sports, winter sports starts in November, so it's a little...
So my recommendation is to once again approve, and unlike some of our other trips, we're requesting final approval for this trip to go out. The reason that Mr. Short comes every year and asks for permission to go is because of our policy that requires with overnight travel that that come before the school committee for, for permission.
So, I will take a motion to approve.
Message to approve Waterville Valley trip that's going, Mr. Short.
Second. Ball on paper.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us, Eric.
The first reading of policy 5105.04, the school calendar policy?
I made, I know that we had a discussion after our workshop meeting and I did refer that additional part about the school week shall consist, it's number two item. So I combined that with maintaining as many of as five-day weeks as possible to maintain the continuity of that instruction. So with that, I want you to know, and I see Mrs. LeBlanc is here and I know she was on our workshop as well, but we did send this out to the other, the folks from the LEA who had joined us for that workshop. And I heard back from a couple of them that it looked like what we discussed. So it's always good that we captured what we had discussed and the guidelines that we agreed to in that meeting. With that, I would recommend this policy to you, the first reading of this policy, and we will post it for public comment.
Okay. We don't actually have to read it, right?
You, you can waive the first reading.
So we're going to waive the first reading. But do I need to make a motion to waive the first reading?
Yes.
Need a motion to waive the first reading.
I moved away with the first reading of the policy.
Second. Ball on paper. Okay. We'll have two more readings of it, though.
Before, yes, you have two more public readings before you adopt.
And it's posted on the website?
It will be.
It will be?
Yeah, it will be. I wanted you to see those changes after our last discussion report posted up.
Okay. And do you have donations?
I do have some donations. We have, I wanted to acknowledge, I wanted to acknowledge the PTO donation for Penny Horse.
Oh, yes.
We received the check, which has been deposited into the Turkey Hill Elementary School Gift Fund in the amount of $6,649.49. So just an amazing effort. And that, of course, will go to cover the field trips. Mrs. Champagne talked about it at the presentation last time. And we have also received a donation from the Lions Club. It's a grant in the amount of $1,875 and it's to support opening up the gym and weight room and aerobics area for students after school for 15 weeks. So this was in the budget and Mrs., this came to Wellness Advisory and Ms. Bergtram reached out to the Lions Club. We knew they had this grant program and Alexis Cukate, Steve Boone, I think, put together the proposal and we found out beginning of this week that it had been awarded. The intent around this is that it will be seed money to get something going. It's not anticipated. This will be a grant that you receive every year. So I anticipate that Mr. Spadafino will be coming in his budget with a recommendation of how this will be funded going forward out of the operational budget or other funds that he might be able to identify as well. So, just really want to acknowledge that. And also, I wanted to acknowledge the work that Steve Powell and I put into making the adaptations to the entryway of the field house in order to ensure that it's ADA compliant. That was a fairly extensive amount of work that he had done and his company and crew and really appreciate, you know, the work and commitment and just the donation of what I'm sure was pretty extensive amount of materials and labor that was provided to make that so we could get certificate of occupancy. Those are the donations I wanted to acknowledge.
You don't mean to accept them, to acknowledge them?
Yeah. Acknowledge and accept them with gratitude. With gratitude. There you go. Message to approve the three outstanding donations. Yes, with gratitude.
Second. Ball on paper.
Aye.
Okay. Now we're going to take a minute, or many, to review the master plan for Turkey Hill Elementary School with Jolanda.
And, and while the audience has some handouts that they can look at and the school committee should have some handouts as well as a layout of Turkey Hill Elementary School and also some modifications that we had suggested at one point in time regarding the moving the central office over to Turkey Hill. So with that, Ms. Calondo, you go.
So, the purpose of the briefing is primarily to provide background information to help prepare for the joint meeting of the board of selectmen on looking at Turkey Hill Elementary School, both its current conditions and also proposed future plans for it. And let me start by saying that in September of 2015, from the school committee, in the Development of the Catholic Plan for FY16, the guidance that I received from the school committee at that time was to look to try to add or to put 10 to 15 years out to when to when we would look at some kind of major project associated with Turkey Hill Elementary School. And so our capital plans that we bring forward have had that, you know, in there. We always provide a ten-year plan, but we also provide some detailed information about Turkey Hill and the major concerns we have with the structure, those being critical repairs and recommended repairs. And those two things come from a study that was done in 2007. The school department had Drummy Roseanne Anderson, a consulting firm, come, looked at all of the schools as we were rolling into the replacement of the high school, and one thing we specifically looked at was what were the capital needs for all of the school buildings at that time. And so out of that came a listing of things that they broke down to a variety of categories, things that were critical repairs, recommended repairs, things that were grandfathered, and they put a price tag on those items to help us kind of come to grips with where our capital needs are going forward. So as we develop the capital plan and send that in, we always include those lists of items, specifically the critical items and the recommended repairs, and where we are with those items with respect to the cost that was established for those in 2007 and where we are today and where we project going forward, using about a five percent annual increase in cost for those items. We also strike items off that list if we're able to deal with them and take them off the list, if they're repairs that we take, have taken on and have taken care of. So we, so that list is continually gets changed and gets updated, but does kind of form a basis of, you know, what, what kind of liabilities we have with respect to capital repairs for Turkey Hill. So that being said, let me review where we are with the current conditions for Turkey Hill. So this is a school that was constructed in 1968, opened in 1969. It's sixty-eight thousand square feet. I have a little arrow on the slide. It was initially constructed for grades five through eight.
Okay.
And it has, it has fluctuated over its history. When we opened the primary school in 2005, we reduced it to six through eight. And that was done because by 1996, you know, the amount of students we had would far exceed what the school could handle. And so two portable classrooms were brought to the school to help allow them to continue to operate with those four grade levels. But then when Lunenburg Primary School was constructed, that provided some relief, and we reduced to three grades, to six through eight. So it's currently grades three through five. The major work has been completed over, over the history of the building. So roof replacements were done from ninety-six through ninety-eight in a series of succession. So the whole roof wasn't done at one time. The back classroom wing was done. The forward portion of the building was done with the exception of the gym, and then finally the gym was done. And so, so, and we continue to move towards the twenty-five year mark when, you know, we started getting concerned about roof replacement. There was a major boiler plant renovation in 2003. At that time, all the boilers were replaced, new pumps were installed, digital controls. So it was a major replacement of the boiler plant. It also allowed for any asbestos that was in the boiler to be removed at that time. And then finally, in 2010, we had a, you know, through a power purchasing grant, we had a photovoltaic system put on the roof. That was, that we're still operating today, and we'll be eventually turning over to the school department, our town's ownership, in 2025. So the major requirements for the building, window systems, of course, are always a problem when the building gets to be as old as Turkey Hill. It's all single pane, low energy efficiency, and we do have asbestos in the caulking that holds the glass in place. Flooring, almost all the classrooms and some of the common areas have the original asbestos flooring. We know that the mastic is also asbestos, and we have, are seeing some spots where we're having some feathered floor. The exception to that, over the last two years, we've replaced flooring in the administrative areas, the first floor hallway this last summer, and two years ago in four classrooms. So it's, as I said, we've got a lot of it still, but we have made some progress on flooring. Plumbing systems are a concern, particularly the shut offs. The original gate valves, if we turn those, we generally are not able to open those back up. With the work that we have been doing to be able to get access above the ceiling, that will help us because we will be able then to replace the valves, be able to get access to them and replace them. So it is, but it is an area that is a concern. Interior finishes, you know, they're in fair condition now. The doors were, you know, are an area that have a lot of things stuck on them and then for a lot of tape, and the finish goes fairly quickly. Ceiling tiles, we do have many broken ceiling tiles, although we have, once again, made progress in the last two years in that we have done a major part of the first floor. And then, you know, we do have a lot of areas that need painting. We will be trying to tackle some of that this year, particularly the areas that we did the flooring and ceilings over with, because that would be, you know, a good thing to be able to try to get these, you know, to match the ceiling and floor to look really good. So, but it is a continued, continued problem. Electrical inadequacies in the building do exist, and, you know, the, it's, some of it we were, have been seeing in the past year with some of our switchgear, you know, had stuck, and we haven't been able to shut the building down. We did have somebody come in, we are able to get, get that repaired, but, you know, we are somewhat limited in the amount of electrical service, electrical distribution throughout the classroom wing. Asbestos, as you know, we've been dealing with the spray-on asbestos, you know, and we've taken a pair of about four classrooms on the first floor, as well as the entire first floor hallway and one stairwell, but we still have first floor classrooms that need asbestos removal, once again, above the ceiling, and, and the second floor hallway and one stairwell. I mentioned floor tiles, we still have a fair amount of asbestos floor tiles. And then we have a small amount of trans light panels. These are mostly on the exterior of the building. They're somewhat brittle, so if we get lacrosse balls bouncing against the building, we have a tendency to break those. And caulk some joints, caulking in the windows, I mentioned, but also any kind of control joints in the building. Those cauks have not been tested for PVC, PVCs, but they, but we are, you know, very concerned about them. But we can, you know, we're able to cover those up and still operate that part of the building. ADA compliance is a continued concern. We really don't have any fully compliant restrooms in the building. We've taken two restrooms, a men's room and a women's room, done the best we can with the size limitations of those spaces. Active to the girls locker room, the stage, and the music room. We have a ramp, the ramp does not meet codes, it's too steep, but it does allow us to get up to the music room and get to the stage. So we are carrying the capital plan, you know, potential lift to the stage. And then life safety, the two major things are there, the sprinkler system, we do not have one at this school. All new schools would have this. The hood suppression system does not exist in that school. It's not a big, I don't think it's a big concern with the type of cooking they do, but if it was a new school, you'd have that. And then fire alarm systems, this is, you know, limitations on, on really, because it's what was built in 1969, limited numbers of smoke detectors, heat detectors, limited numbers of horn and strobes, particularly in places like the restrooms. So our current fire alarm system doesn't meet current codes. Air conditioning capability is very, very limited. We have a classroom that's a pair of air conditioners side by side, and we have one very large air conditioner in the principal's office. And we have a portable unit that we move around trying to deal with needs for air conditioning for students that have that need. Exterior envelope issues, we know we have problems with some of the faces. We are looking to try to deal with that through, through Green Communities Grant. And we also have some lintels that are concerned. Lintels are the big concrete pieces under the windows. We have some of those that are deteriorating on the gym side, and one by the tech shop that has seen some movement, and those just become a concern that we would, you know, have something come off the building that we weren't expecting. And then probably HVAC and building control. So this is probably one of the, HVAC in building is probably the biggest single dollar amount in the critical repairs or recommended repairs. I think the, you know, we're in the multi, multimillion dollar range for this. Everything is, we have challenges with it because we're running old pneumatics, and we have digital controls operating the boiler room. The pneumatic controls, we are unable to get parts, but we are, you know, working on equipment that is approaching fifty years old. So, you know, it's, it's an area because there's so much of it and it's so expensive that it remains something that we have to monitor and ensure that we are always looking at that and making sure that the system works and works well. We don't get a lot of feedback in the system. It's, we get no feedback in the system. It's what people tell us is going wrong that we have to go look at, unlike a digital control system. So those are, those are the major requirements. The capital plan submission, I included that just to kind of, you know, just kind of cover what we've submitted over that, or going to be submitting for the next ten-year period. The one thing you see out there that I'd like to highlight is FY24. We're counting a million dollars for roof repair. This is, I think, one of the critical decisions in the future planning, and it's the one that I think will drive the train on what happens to the building over the, over this ten to fifteen year period. Well, you know, there, the, the ten, million dollars for roof repair, you know, assume some kind of major roof replacement. And, you know, we would definitely be over the twenty-five year period where we think, well, this is when you start getting very concerned about roofing. We also know that our current power purchasing agreement has built into it a requirement for the company that owns these panels to remove it one time, remove the panels one time for a major roof repair before, and then reinstall them while they own it. They're not going to own it past FY24. By that point, we will own the entire photovoltaic system. It's labor to take it down, labor to put it back up. And so that comes into the, figures into it. The million dollars, this is a project that the MSBA would partner with us on. So five hundred thou, roughly five hundred thousand could be coming from the MSBA. If we do take them up on that, we ask for that, that essentially says they will not come back and touch this building for ten more years. So that has to be figured into the calculus about where we go with the building. But, but that's why you see this on air and carried in capital plan is to give visibility to that issue, one that we will perform FY24 act to come to grips with. I'm gonna move on to other planned work. I mentioned briefly Green Communities Project. We're going through a grant round in January. We're looking to do a bright lighting retrofit to go to LEDs, roughly fifty-five thousand. We also are looking to do an air sealing and insulation project valued at around twenty thousand, and we, you know, would like to see to leave those into the town's submission for that grant in January. And then we talked in the capital planning meetings about this shade structure potentially out of the FY19 school budget. So long-term, I'm gonna throw three potential options out for your consideration. First option one would be is a roof replacement because the roof was going to be twenty-five years old between 2020 and 2023, which is the only one we typically would look at a roofing project. And because of the fifteen-year PPA and the, and the once removal that is included in that PPA, we could look at doing that roofing project in, probably in 2024, once again, with the MSBA's assistance, and with an estimated cost of a million dollars. And then ten years later, we probably then be looking to do something in a very major way at Turkey Hill Elementary School. A second option might be to bypass the work on the roof and look at a renovation and try to fit that in. The concern on the renovation might be at that point is, okay, you know, we don't really have the ability, I don't believe we will have the ability to say we're gonna add duct lift for air conditioning. And so renovation, we have the ability to renovate the building, but we probably don't have it to add air conditioning. We have room to expand on the classroom wing. When the school was built, the classroom wing had stubs for all of the services placed at the very end of the building with the idea that it would expand towards the track. And it would expand, you know, with, for every classroom you add on, you're essentially adding four, two upstairs, two downstairs, and you continue to double or core down. And, you know, potentially you could also go to the other side to add more that direction. So, you know, we are limited by the track, how far you can go, but there is room to expand on, potentially on both ends. So you could clearly see an addition of eight classrooms if, if we think that that's what's needed and that's what the population, you know, at that time requires that we expand. So there is room for expansion. So, you know, and that I would say is I would look at a renovation in 2029 and then maintain the roof. At that point, the school will be sixty years old, and, you know, we would have to really just continue to try to make sure we stay on top of any roof leaks that occur. We currently don't have any in the school, but as I said, we're talking, you know, ways down the road here, so that's an option. And then option three would be a replacement of the building. It's clearly a more expensive option, and then locating, finding a location for new construction also has to be sorted out. It could go something along the line of what we did with, with Lunenburg Middle High School, take an athletic field, you know, build the school on the athletic field, and then, you know, raise the Turkey Hill building and then put a field in in its real place. So that's, that's kind of a model you could see. Once again, you could see, look at doing that as early as 2029, and once again, maintain the roof on the, on the school until you get to that point. So those are two, those I think are three very viable options, and I think the, you know, when you look at these, it comes down to a couple of things. One, you know, what, what the school looks like at the sixty-year point as far as the conditions and what, and also what's the taxpayers' appetite for being able to take on another major project. And I think that's, gives you something to think about for a long-term plan. I did attach a copy of, you know, the critical repairs, the necessary repairs to come, just highlight that, and those by 2024 are somewhere around five point six million dollars. And once again, that's not a renovation, that's just dealing with the critical repairs. I did run that further out to 2029, and by then it's seven point, seven point five.
Mr. Monta, that was attached to the capital plan that you presented, right? I didn't get that out. We don't have hard copies of that.
Okay, so this is, that's a sheet that we do include with the capital plan. I just wanted to kind of put those numbers out there. Once again, those are, those are not the numbers that you would be talking about if you were talking either renovation or replacement. That's just dealing with capital repairs.
What was the figure again?
So, so in 2024, those would be five point nine million, and by 2029, that would be seven point five. And I didn't run it out as far as.
Twenty thirty-five was the estimate that was listed in here as, as a sixty-six-year-old building.
2035 was the estimate that was listed in here as a 66-year-old building would need further addressing that.
Yeah, that's some reason. So, and that was based on a 5% escalator. So once again, we really don't know, you know, our data point starting is 2007, so how good those number are, it will be by then is hard to say. Clearly, before you launch any kind of product, we would do updated costing to be able to kind of come up with, so what do you really need to do this project? So that is the Turkey Hill piece. Kind of shifting gears to talk about the options for the school district's offices. In 2015, we were thinking about this issue with some, with lots of uncertainty of what the future held for the Passios Elementary School. We knew that when we, as we started into the high school project, that knew that the town was on, the school committee had voted to, or had made a commitment to turn over the Passios and the Brooks House to the town. We knew that that commitment had been made. We also knew we didn't really want to be at the end of the project and not really have some idea about what's going to happen with these structures, you know, particularly because we knew that, you know, there was potential that one of the options might be demolition, with the idea that there might be a field there. So, and also, we didn't really know what the town's view was, and so we wanted to have that discussion. So through the building reuse committee, you know, a lot of these options have been explored. The town did a, did a study with the pay associates to kind of review all those options for the Passios. Came, they came back with, you know, recommendations to the board of selectmen to potentially look at the town hall being housed out of the Passios. And since that time, of course, the town continues to study that and try to come to grips with what are they doing with the Passios and the other buildings, Brooks House, primary, old primary school, et cetera. So as we, because of that situation, we started looking at, okay, what if we, what if the decision was tear the Passios down, where would we relocate the existing staff to? So we looked at Turkey Hill with them going from, going to the three-grade structure and what spaces would be available to be able to put, you know, district offices in there. And so we've come up with options to use rooms 110, 112, 109, and 111. With 110 being, you know, the more or less the business office, secretaries for the superintendent, 112 being the superintendent's office, 109 being, being used for, which is one of the largest rooms in the school, being used for the entire special services suite, as well as some record storage for both district and special services. And then 111 was going to be also some special services work areas. And so, and we also looked at our district maintenance and knew we had the technology shop, which was also a very, very large space. So we did split that and created a space for the school maintenance team to be able to work out of. We didn't get as far as we would have liked to, but we did get a space separate and distinct from the rest of the instructional space where the school maintenance team could be housed out of. And the thought was that the director facility would also be in that same space, so they would be closely working together. And then as part of the middle school, high school project, we constructed the ground storage barn right alongside that. So with the idea that at some point, that's what all of this could work out of. What we really didn't account for was food services. At the time, we didn't have a food service director, so we really didn't have a plan where that would go to. We thought about ACE being in 113. We thought about, I would say, you know, controls, how we maintain this building as far as, not the building, but the spaces that the district would be in, how to operate those independent of the rest of the school. Right now, you know, it's a school, when we turn it on, it all goes on. And I mean all of it. So all the intermediator throughout the entire building, but we want to be able to occupy this, you know, year-round, but not run the entire building year-round. So we put in the capital plan a request for, I believe it was 15,000 to be able to add additional air conditioning for those spaces where we saw district staff being 109, 111, and 110, and 112. That went into the capital plan, was in there for a year, and then it didn't get any support. But we did manage to get, you know, roof ceilings and flooring replaced, which gave us the option to be able to do some additional work in those spaces. But when that didn't get supported and then the town came to the decision that, well, you know, look at the option of the town hall going into the Passios, we did not execute the plan to relocate the district headquarters. And so pretty much work had stopped on any, you know, further push on that. But that room still remains an option. As I said, we don't really know, you know, there are options for the food service director, but at that point, we really didn't have anything for them. But certainly, the district could find a spot for a food service director, someone in the district.
And the IT.
Yeah, the IT was not, never figured in to, into going to Turkey Hill. And when we were constructing this place, we kind of thought we'd have two IT people here, but we rounded up to one. And so that's another, another piece of the puzzle to be solved, where we would, where we would house IT, you know, to a second person here maybe, try to find somebody potentially in the primary school might be a good location because it's the remote site.
Or one of the town buildings because one of those individuals is shared, well, they're all shared. So basically, currently, there's one IT person here in this building that is a full-time school person. And then Mr. Mallory knows is at town hall, and he, of course, is shared. And then the two individuals that are at TCP are shared facilities as well. Mr. Monda, the full plan that we gave the school committee on this, you should come get this one, because it goes back to the, the room number is different because this is the.
There's two from 111, which one? You thought happening.
The idea we tried to keep all of the district offices closely grouped in the building. So this is the main entryway.
This is the 2015, this is what it was proposed in 2015?
Yes. Yes.
Right. At that point in time, I think TCP was, going back to the town, that there was a notion of it being developed maybe as business or residential, or there were those types of options as opposed to town halls was being discussed. Sorry, John.
So, yeah, so the main entryway is here. This is the classroom wing. So we looked to keep, you know, said, the business office, human resources, secretary here, superintendent's office here, there's a passage door between those two. This room here would have been special services. And then this was the special services additional staff as a workman, and then ACE being here. So we tried to keep things fairly close to the entryway as best we could and also grouped together. And those were the kind of the, so like I said, we did take those four rooms and we did do some work on it so that the flooring has been replaced with the idea that we could go into those needs. So there's carpeting in it for 110 and for 112, and also in 109. So these three rooms are now in carpet squares, this room, this room, this room, and then this room stayed in, stayed in 115. So, and like I said, we did do the ceilings over and asbestos removal. So if there need to be additional telephone wiring, additional electrical power, power for air conditioning, you know, we have the ability to step up the ceilings, you know, there and do work.
Some of the challenges you face, I mean, certainly central offices have been in an active elementary building in the past because when we moved out at Brooks House, our offices were located there at TC Passios. And then at that, and in the other, other schools, the curriculum director at that time was down at the primary school is where their offices. And I think special services ended up elder at Turkey Hill Middle School at that time. So central office was kind of dispersed around the district. This would, putting central offices there, it could work, and ACE. There are some challenges around doing that, however, in that you don't have, for the ACE students who are, the students who are 18 to 22, in the building with three through five, we're down on that end of that corridor. But the restrooms in that area, there's only faculty restrooms or the student restrooms. So you'd have to have a good plan in place in terms of, I would imagine, the ACE students would be using the faculty restrooms at that point in time along with the central office. So that's one of the challenges, not insurmountable, but just one of the things that we have to think about in terms of this plan. Also, the art program remains where the art program is now, that's the classroom. And so you, you will have students traversing that hallway where the central offices are located. The special services area doesn't have, would, it would be challenging, just as it was in the central office area. Again, not impossible, but challenging to address how you get some privacy in terms of the special education director's office being something other than just behind some dividers, you know, within the room where the public and as well as the contractors are. So, you know, that's the proposal we started working with and the level of detail that we got to. And so it is an option, but would take some work to have it work well for everyone, obviously. And then in a renovation or redoing the building, the MSBA doesn't pay for central office. So if it were to remain there, it would need to, you know, just be factored in as a cost in terms of how it would then be seconded off in order to continue to operate as a central office. So, so that is just to review some of the proposals that we've had in the past as we continue to evolve and figure out where central office will be. I think the town manager and I've talked about this, and certainly there's a strong desire for us to continue to look for synergies between the schools, employees, and town employees, as we've done with the IT positions, and begin to share more of those. And that's an opportunity, obviously. There are definite benefits, from my estimation, of, you know, having the school central office as part of the town hall and being right there by their business office and being role in all of those functions as well. We're very close now, you know, will all, obviously can make it work, but there's pluses and minuses with any plan. So I think that captures most of it.
Can you just tell me how many classrooms are being occupied right now? Is there room for growth in classrooms?
You, right now, we could add a classroom at every grade level in this building. I'm a little bit concerned about if we add another ACE program back, but I think that could be accommodated as well because right now we're, we are at 565 there in terms of our sections. And if you went to 666, there are two rooms available to pick up those additional six levels. Plus then a third room for the second name. Well, no, because the achieved room has to move out. So what, what would become a challenge is a second achieved classroom there. And I think Ms. Hanscom projected that a couple of years from now, if the population remains the same, we'd probably be looking at adding another achieved program back into that building and having a two-achieved classroom.
It was just brought up at that meeting, that's why.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So definitely, you start to worry, get squeezed in the program or in the building. And needing to deal with some important kinds of aspects of, as you said, what, what bathroom facilities everything is going to be using. And the entryway, too.
That was the only question I had. Is there an exterior entryway that you can bypass?
Right.
Where this goes right here, is that accessible as? From the side? Remember, when we went looking last night, I thought we could go out the side door?
Right by art. It goes out to the shop. It goes out to where the garage is now.
Yeah, so we have, we do have a walkway there. We don't have electronic doors and we don't, you know, someone arriving at the building will have a hard time finding that entryway because it's just not obvious that you got to go around the building and between sheds in the building.
Yeah, that's right.
So it certainly could get an electronic door, it could be made to work, it just, I'm not sure it's going to be, somebody arriving at the building for the first time, why aren't they finding the entryway?
He wants a good sign, for sure. And I don't know if you, the parking obviously becomes, where do you reserve, are they parking in the parking lot or are we moving some trash cans?
I just didn't know if it was cumbersome to have the secretaries buzzing in, you know what I mean? If that was all included and then if you have people coming to the central office, if that, if they are included in the signing in at the front office, how is security? Do they go, you know, under whose purview do they sort of fall? That was the only question I had, but.
Yeah, parking will be a concern. It's because you're not waiting a lot more folks still in the building.
Not a lot of extra spots when visitors come.
Yeah, I mean, like currently, there are spots, but, but they're usually, you know, furthest away. And there's a few visitor spots in the front, but.
There's only like two visitor spots.
Yeah, so now if you had two different reasons to come here, you know, it's going to become just more challenging.
Yeah, I think the, there is parking available down there now, given just three grade levels in the building. Because we have to remind high school students frequently that that's, that's not high school parking. But I think that that would basically be taken up with the employees. So you still would need to really address where the visitors are going to go. Okay, thank you. So all of this leads, in preparation, as we look towards that joint meeting that appears, that it will work for everyone on the 21st of November with the board of selectmen. Great. At this time, is there more or different information that the committee needs Mr. Monda and I to look into? At this, I don't suppose there's anything here. I think as we look at the continued enrollment growth here as well, that we're going to be hitting capacity in this.
I mean, it was already happened. And has it been, and I'm not saying either way, I don't, you know, it doesn't matter, is that their preference to keeping special services and the superintendent offices together, which obviously are ideal, or is that not on the preference list? Could they be like?
Those could be split, yeah. Over time, those have been split. And certainly, you know, our practice is that being out in the building is a lot, and you make the time, the communication flow. So it is not essential for those to be there. I think it is very, from my perspective, it's very important to have the special ed director or some central office with the ACE program.
Absolutely.
Because that program requires support. And, you know, I know that right now that the high school administration is supporting in certain ways, but also Mrs. Hanscom, as well as our office, provide that support in the building on the spot when it's, when it's needed for those students and the teachers.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go then. No more questions?
The other request we had from the school committee is just a review and update on the track and field. And one of the things that I asked Mr. Londa to do in preparation for this is some ongoing concerns that I know have been discussed in the past around what's happening with the retaining wall and the bleachers on the track and field. And I passed down, Mr. Londa went out and took some pictures yesterday, was it Mr. Londa, so they're very.
That's beautiful.
And there's a handout up here.
So, I think it covers what we're essentially seeing, this is, I took just a few photos to kind of just show a little bit of the magnitude. This is not at the point where it's ready to collapse or anything like that, but you're seeing signs that there's emissions here. You know, the bleachers, the fact that they're no longer aligned, that means one of the bleachers has been moved. And the picture just shows that one of the blocks fully in contact with one of the bleachers, and so pressure the wall is starting to move some of the bleachers. It hasn't moved a lot, but it has moved some. And then there's another photo that just shows back in the corner, one of the blocks just completely just kind of falling apart. Now, most of the blocks don't look that way, this one looks particularly bad, but there were signs in other locations and cracks, and some shifting of some of the blocks. And then finally, you know, there's a fence on a low retaining wall over the edge of the track, and the fence is, looks like it's way over, and the fence is actually not what's moving, it's the wall that's moving. And so it's, it's coming over. And once again, I know that it's in a position where it's going to collapse, but, you know, the more you see this, the more you know it's moved, and some of the pavers on the upper side where the pedestrians would be walking down, you can see there's a noticeable dip in there, and that's just because you're just losing probably some of the fine materials out behind the wall, and which is allowing things to, you know, water gets in there, you get free saw, saw cycle and starts pushing things. So this is the worst I've seen to fence that fence in like the last 11 years, so it keeps moving, and at some point that will have to be dealt with. Whether it's gonna take, I don't really have any idea what the cost will be. I do know that, you know, if you have to deal with this large block wall behind the bleachers, that that will be an expensive proposition, and the bleachers would have to be removed. There's a press box that sits on top of the wall, that would have to be moved, all the blocks taken out, and then you probably would be trying to get some kind of poured concrete wall in there, and then reset it all back. So pretty, probably will be an expensive endeavor. The low retaining wall in the front, less so. That, good access to, you know, you find a fence, rip it all out, form it up, pour it, and then reset the fence. So certainly not as expensive, but that, that large block wall, because there's several things involved in it, the, once again, bleachers and press box. And right now, the entryway into the press box is a little precarious, a small one that's bucked over.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's dipped, there's a dip.
Yeah, and it's really not, you know, you need another retaining wall to get up to the same level, it's not accessible either, so it's got multiple strikes on it. So at some point that would have to get dealt with anyhow, but, but as I said, I think it's gotta get moved to be able to fix this wall up, I think. It's something that needs to be thought about for a capital plan and focused about, well, how and when does this get addressed?
Are there any short-term fixes that you would recommend?
No, no, I don't think so. It's, it's really not, because it's a really large concrete block, they are fully in contact with the bleachers, but nothing you could do short.
So would this go into your cap plan for next year?
Uh, yeah, it would be something that I would have to, I think that you would get somebody out to explore and what the cost would be in comparison with the cost is, because, like I said, it's not optimistic where it's gonna collapse, like today or tomorrow, not in the next year, but it's something that needs to be addressed, and it's gonna be expensive.
And when was that originally put in?
Probably in 2004, I would say 2004.
And wasn't part of the track, right, correct?
Yes, yes, this was, this was part of the construction for the track.
It was, it was part of the original, okay.
Yeah, I mean, in some respects, looking back, I find it was a shame we didn't pick this up into the building project, but it was outside the school.
It was outside, yeah.
We couldn't, right. So next time you're here, would you, would you potentially have any, you know, big numbers, or is this something that would just sort of backburner for the moment?
Uh, you know, it's something I think we would try to get somebody to come take a look at it, that, that does, you know, several type of construction, and kind of get an estimate of what it would, what it would cost, but they said there's, they said there's a number of pieces that have to be dealt with, so. So we certainly can work on getting pricing, on some pricing, get some of this.
So we have somewhat of an idea.
Well, what's the typical lifespan of something like this?
Well, it should be, it should be definite, but, but only in this case, it's not.
If it's a 15-year lifecycle, then we need to look, start looking at not only now-ish doing something, but in the 10 to 15-year plan, we need to start looking at potentially doing something. So I'd be interested in knowing what the lifecycle of something like that should be.
Yeah, I would say that this is.
Any recourse that we have for a special measure at this point?
I think this doesn't really fit that model particularly well, because when this, I'm sure when this was constructed, they would not have imagined that this was the outcome 10 years later. So I'm saying that I guess that this is a, this is not what anybody would have expected. But, I mean, it was done, you know, it was done, you know, cheaply as possible, and, you know, so the results are not great, and.
It's not because of the new construction, is it?
No.
Nothing to do with this building, correct?
No.
Okay.
No, there were signs of this earlier going on.
Yeah, yeah.
It was really evident to me this year, but.
You know, so I think what really, we need to come across with the cost is, you know, kind of come across with, you know, how soon does this need to be addressed? And, because I don't have a good feel for either of those two things.
Okay. So with regard to getting it on a capital plan, into a capital plan, you know, part of what we needed to look at is just how this whole area is operating. So I went back to try to capture the history for those that might not be aware of the history behind the track and field, because it's, it's one that goes back to, you know, 2000 and even a couple of years of 1998, 1999, when the Lunenburg Track and Athletic Fields Association began this amazing effort to get this facility in place. And it started out with donations and fundraising, and then evolved into the tax payers coming into that and finishing the project. But in May 30th, and I do have, I have copies of these things, so you could have them and research them at your leisure, if you have a sleepless night, there's a lot of reading for you. But I think it's important to remember, you know, the community efforts that went behind this and the dedication and commitment of so many volunteers. But at that point in time, the Lunenburg Track and Field Association reached out to the Lunenburg Parks Commissioners, and they indicated that it was important to them and many of their contributors that the Parks Department maintained this facility in the future. And so they, they sent this request, and they copied it to the capo at the time, making that request of the Parks Commission. They also, because this whole project was going to be on school property, started working with the school committee in terms of how this might all come about. And in 2002, the minutes reflected that the school committee at that particular time, this is on page three of those minutes that you have of July 31st, 2002, school committee meeting, that the discussion centered on the transfer of land to the Parks Department to accommodate a grant application for the project. Dr. Carlson advised the committee that this action would in the future impact the school's ability to renovate or expand any of the schools or the current campus. The school committee also reinforced that this action would not be advisable. Ms. Keeling moved, and Dr. Berthew seconded that the area between Turkey Hill Middle School and Lunenburg High School, including the area of the new track, be restricted for recreational purposes, and furthermore, that the board of selectmen be notified of the committee's action relative to that. So I think there were some in town that viewed that action as a release of the property, but that indeed was not a release of the property, it was designating this piece of the school property as recreation is what it was doing. And as you read in the minutes, it was, in order to seek grants to assist in the construction. That then went up to the board of selectmen, who basically endorsed, and those are the next meeting, minutes that you have, and said, we're not really sure why this has come to us, but I guess if the school committee wants to designate it as recreation, they can. So that is, you see some discussion there, and that they basically voted unanimously to endorse the school committee's endorsement. So that's what happened with the board of selectmen. And then on August 14th of 2002, the Parks Commission acknowledged the recent votes by the school committee and the board of selectmen concerning control of the property for the proposed track and field, it was discussed. And then, given their ongoing participation in the project, a motion was made that they accept responsibility for the maintenance and scheduling for this facility, and that was a three to zero vote. And that was followed up with, there's a record, a letter on file from the Parks Commissioners at that time, just said that they would accept responsibility for maintenance, planning, and scheduling of the proposed track and field facility. So just to clarify again, the property remains under the jurisdiction of the school committee, but it was designated as renovation, and in 2000, for the purposes of applying for a grant, and in 2009, it came back to the school committee because there had been some concerns around how the scheduling of the fields, as well as the access to them and the concessions stand, just what were the guidelines for that? There was members of the school community who had perceived that there were differences in terms of how the facility was being sometimes rented out to some individuals and not charged other individuals. So it came back to the school committee at that time to sort it all out. And that series of work.
I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, I just want to pause for one second here, just so, because I know that not everybody has all of this information in front of them. So as I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, on the 14th of August 2002, which was the Parks Commission notation we have here, the ongoing, a motion was made to accept responsibility for the maintenance and scheduling for the facility by the Parks Commission. However, so they would maintain and plan and schedule, but they, but it was just a recreational space that was under the purview of the school committee still. Is that how?
The property.
The property is the school committee, but in, on September 4th, 2002, there was a, there was an unanimous vote that the Parks Commission would maintain, plan, and schedule the track. So that's where we were in 2002.
Right.
Okay, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that I'm following this correctly.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
In 2009, and then there was some concerns about how that was operating for everyone. And so it came back to the school committee at that time, and was discussed about, once again, the, the school committee asserted that it is school property, and, and that was sorted out through just a review of all the records with regard to the ownership as well, but, because there was never any action at town meeting, which would have been necessary for that to happen. We saw that with the release of the primary school, as well as Turkey Hill or Tomasi Passios. So there, on page two of those minutes, you can see basically the discussion that took place at that point in time. And then Mr. Londa and I were charged with working to develop a memorandum of understanding or a memorandum of agreement with the Parks Commission in order to make sure that that all got sorted out. And so the public would know what were, what were the policies and procedures for both the Parks Commission as well as school that this facility would operate under. And in that packet, I've included some email exchanges from the town manager and myself, as well as the then chair of the Parks Commission, talking about the questions related to the property, and the concerns that we were trying to sort out there. And the town manager, at that time, you know, said that it's clear that the property belongs to the school, it's school property. So we continued to work with the Parks Department for a period of time. In November 16th of 2010, the Parks Commission indicated that they could not agree, and this is in minutes from that meeting, would, will not agree to future guidelines or policies. That was the sticking point, that the Parks Department could not agree to future guidelines or policies without mutual agreement. The school's position is the park would have input, but, but not a vote on those, because of the school property, the government, governments remained within the school, and there would be consultation, but the school committee was by rights able to take policy action related to that. So that was the sticking point, and the Parks Commission voted three to zero at that time to refuse to sign any kind of agreement until this issue was worked out. So, over time, we've continued to try to work this issue out. I think both committees, as well as their associated administrative teams, have been drawn on task by various other commitments, like regionalization studies and, and building new facilities, and taking care of the other parks in town. And there's been just changes on both of the commission and the school committee. And in 2016, in policy subcommittee, as we were talking about the fields, and we were also talking about the need to replace the artificial turf, the track and field, we once again proposed a memorandum of understanding or agreement to the Parks Commission. We gave it to them then, we received no feedback about it at this point in time. It continues to be on their, their meeting agendas up until, up through their recent time, but we do not yet have a memorandum of agreement in place. but we do not yet have a memorandum of agreement in place. So that, this is the most recent action.
Up until this point, right?
Right.
2012, we're still operating under the guidelines that the Parks Commission has already approved, that they are responsible for maintenance and maintenance. They haven't rescinded that up until this point, correct? In a 10-year period?
Right. Right. And currently.
And we haven't revoked the authorization.
We have not revoked that. Mr. Londa and his staff are doing most of the maintenance down there. The DPW helps out with certain things, but at this point in time, it's school personnel that are maintaining.
Okay, so the property. So even though that 2002 document says the Parks Commission would AD and C, they're, it's actually not happening?
Correct.
Is what it sounds like.
Correct. You're understanding.
The 2012, that last package. I don't know what happens after.
Okay, now, then, okay.
So that's our status at this time. I also put together, the original memorandum of understanding was based upon a policy, it was a school committee policy, actually, that indicates that it was shared, that the Parks Commission and the school committee worked together to develop these guidelines, and it was put into the school committee policy of how parks and school facilities would be shared across the various agencies. But what else I've attached to those are the various iterations of the memorandums of understanding. Because that was the document that I used initially to draft the first, in 2009, the first proposal for a memorandum of understanding. So that was, that, and a couple of iterations later of that, was what the Parks Commission voted no to, okay? And then you have the most recent one that we did in 2016.
This may sound naive, and I apologize. But, first, my question was, why are we trying to have the memorandum? Like, why don't we, why aren't we just responsible for the track and field? But now that I'm seeing this document where, obviously, the history of Lunenburg, back to 1970, was that the Lunenburg Parks Department shared in the responsibility and the scheduling of all these sports activities. So, just trying to understand.
And shared in space with the community.
Right. Well, the community, you know, parks.
Right.
Sure, the community parks, for sure. Like Marshall Field, Wallace, Fitzgerald, McNally.
Oh, the ball fields, you know, baseball fields, basically.
And parks.
Yeah.
Some of the history around it, even in terms of the designation of recreation, and it being at the Lunenburg Track and Field Association, saying the track, you know, will the parks accept the responsibility? Is because they wanted to make, assure that it communicated out that this was a community facility. I don't know what that says about the culture and the climate at the time, because I know it's something we've talked about with this facility in terms of how important it is to the school committees, at both past and present, that we recognize the generosity and the support of the community. And we want to make sure all the community is using this. Our lifelong learning program, our agreements with the youth sports, et cetera. We see these as community buildings. So I think the context of the times probably influences what was going on as well. So that's, and currently, you know, we have, there was, the town voted to support the replacement of the track. This school committee signed, the repair of the track and the replacement of the turf. And this committee signed, assigned a financial commitment letter that says the schools will be paying $40,000 every year towards that. Mr. Londa worked very diligently, and we have a cell tower project going forward that will bring in some income. And that is an additional 30 that will be going through. That, Ms. Londa, did you have an update? Did you hear back from?
No, I didn't get anything really, really recent. So, but they've been through the special permit process, and they were needed to go get a contractor identified, bid to work, get a contract identified, and then pull a building permit, which is when the funding would start. So, and I don't know if they've got a contractor, if they've bid to work yet. So I've asked, tried to get an update on where they are on that process.
And then the youth football program, sending a similar letter of commitment out, so of the 85,000, 8,500 that they're paying, 7,500 of that will go directly into the revolving account that will pay down this, that was taken out to finish that project. So part of this, we continue to work cooperatively with community groups in order to ensure the operation and the care of this facility. So that's the background that gets us to this point.
So what is the, what is the action that we are hoping, what now?
I don't know if there's any action, other than making it clear that I, there's, and maybe this will come up under reports, school council reports, but I know that one of the things that is happening right now is a proposal for naming of the track, as well as the field itself. And we have a naming policy. And because it's school committee property, that needs to be processed. They're here. I don't know what the, if the parks have a policy. I don't believe they have anything like that on the books. I believe we shared what our policy was with them earlier this summer. But it's important for folks to know that there still is a need to talk to both the commission and the school committee around proposals. And I think it needs to be made clear who is, who's going to develop the capital plan? Who's going to be submitting under this procedure? Yeah, I don't know what, if anything has been submitted to the capital plan around the future improvements for the, for the track and field that Mr. Londa just talked about. So we just want to make sure that ends up in the capital plan from one of these departments.
It's just more confusing, because we don't have that memorandum with the in writing of who's doing what piece of what.
Except that vague letter from 2002.
To omit any concern? So this, this, this policy, I'm sorry, this memorandum from January 2016, the draft, is still on the table, presented from us to the Parks? Could be withdrawn, or? Commission?
It has been on the table. It hasn't been acted upon. And I don't know if the Parks Commission, we need to get with the Parks Commission, perhaps a joint meeting is what's needed next, to make sure that, that.
Did they know their seat of it? Did they, I mean?
Yes, they have, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Let's invite them.
Invite them to a meeting.
Are we, we're going to be talking about this at the board of selectmen meeting, correct? Is that a part of our, no?
No, I don't think this is.
No, that's just the relocation, okay.
Just the relocation, yeah.
Well, I don't know when we're going to have time to invite them to a meeting.
With the budget.
Does it become a faculty meeting?
Well, we asked them what their.
Through policy subcommittee.
We could do it as a policy subcommittee meeting, invite them to one of those.
I'm just wondering, if this was, if this was sent by the school committee in January of 2016, and we haven't heard from them, has anybody inquired? Have we inquired as to why we haven't, like, their reason? I mean, maybe it's really simple, or not, I don't know. But I'm just.
No response is even more troubling than at least an answer or something.
They've got pretty new members, right? They just flipped the whole board. So the people that you'd meet with probably don't know any, much of this stuff.
They need the history, too.
I would think.
And perhaps there is less in writing for them to be able to.
I don't know, but I'm not even sure that they have anything.
So superintendent comms had to do a great deal of digging.
I know, I appreciate all of this information.
If they don't have that kind of hard copy available anywhere, it may be causing confusion or apprehension as well.
Yeah. That makes more sense than anything, because obviously you can't act on something if you don't have the background.
I think from the beginning, there's, it's been a challenge just because of the infrastructure. There wasn't, unlike with the school committee, that has policies and procedures, and has had longstanding policies and procedures that we work with. That wasn't necessarily the case, from my perception, in working with the parks from 2009 forward. That body of policy does not exist there. And there has been, and there has been changes as well, yeah. Everyone's just concerned that this property be well-maintained. The original concern from the Lunenburg American Fields Association was that it be cared for.
Well, and I also feel like we have a commitment to people who, you know, I know you said something about the naming of the facility. I feel like we have a commitment to the residents of Lunenburg to respond appropriately and in a timely manner to them when they come to us with something. So, you know, this, it just is, you know, there's, it's backended by us not knowing, and then we can't really respond to anybody, because we're not sure, you know, that kind of a thing. So I think everybody just wants to be able to appropriately respond in a timely manner, so.
Do you want to have a meeting with them? Do you want to?
I just want to make sure that they have all the information. Do they need information? Do they, what do they need? Maybe we can reach out and ask them if they, what they need in terms of, do they need this information? Maybe you said, you know, they might not have it. I'm happy to.
Do they have all access to what you just came up with?
They can.
No.
I haven't said that. I always present to the school committee before I send things.
Thank you.
Anyplace else. You get it first.
Perhaps, perhaps the sharing of this entire sort of chain, because it spans 15 years. So perhaps sharing that with them.
Absolutely.
And I think the way that it was presented, I think it's, something needs to be presented in a conversation, as opposed to just emailing.
Oh.
Or just making sure that I wanted to address that.
We'll do it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And simultaneously.
I hope this has been helpful.
Oh, it's very helpful. But also in reaching out and sharing, you know, in a conversation, sharing that, sharing hard copies, then really looking to a what's next, so that we can take some steps.
And we always have IBV.
Thank you, Mr. Londa.
Yeah, that's right, IBV to Fawn.
IBV. Well, parks still have a budget, so obviously.
That's what I'm saying.
It would be our. Okay, do we have any suggestions for policy to be reviewed and created?
I actually do.
Okay.
Yeah, is this regarding all sections of policy?
Yeah, that's why we have it on this.
So there were a couple of sections we reviewed last year. Particularly, now that we're into our new building for a solid year, to be able to look things that, you know, regarding our fields and fees, and different policies relating to, you know, to students, everything from field trips, athletics, things that might affect them. We did take some time with this last year, but I think that there are things that we didn't really do much with, or they're not working as they are. And I would love to see us look at some portions of those series again.
There you have one.
The facilities use.
Facilities use, yes. Well, but not facilities use per se, how it relates to students' fees particularly.
The fees are set by this, but we'll look at policy, okay.
Policy that would allow us to, to facilitate any changes.
Okay. Around student fees.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have on the list, I know Mrs. Boyle was at the last meeting, and we had, I was able to look at that, the difference between the student and staff. So if that's on the list, that would be great.
Yeah.
A privacy or whatever.
We did just, I think all of those are listed on this for the policy subcommittee to look at.
To look at.
And then that was a very long meeting last time. I had actually, a few others, animals. And this comes up around dogs in particular, but generally we expand it to just all animals, because you never know when somebody might bring their pet horse.
On the campus.
On the campus, that's right. So it would be on school property with additional detail around playgrounds and fields. You know, as I go, travel around the state, I've noticed that the majority of fields have posted, and playgrounds have posted, that no animals allowed for the city.
We do have some of the signage on our fields.
We do have some of that signage, yeah. But what we don't have, we have that signage, but we've never codified it in policy. And I think it's a force to codify in, in policy.
And to ensure that that actually gets dispersed from that point. Because when people come to our games, one of the helpful things, when you're going to other games as well, is that there are maps that are given through websites, and they clearly state those things. So to ensure that we have the correct follow-through, if that's policy that we.
Policy and then communication of that.
Yeah.
You know, we should put down the ongoing and annual review of the bullying prevention and intervention plan and related policies. Policies and procedures regarding handling cash.
Cash.
Or any kind of money collection, but cash. And then, this is kind of left over from the reconfiguration, which was policy related to displays, trophies, memorial, et cetera. And I know we had a subcommittee that worked on that, an advisory committee. So it's during the year prior to reconfiguration. But with everything else that was going on, it did get finished, and we need to finish that. And it begins, gets finished in policy. So those were the ones that I wanted to put on the record for review. Well, you did.
Okay, public comment from the public? Now, public comment from the board. I have one thing I need to bring up. The meeting on November 15th, I have a conflict. It's the second meeting of the month. So superintendent suggested that maybe we could move the date to perhaps the 16th. It's a Thursday. Because we will begin budget meeting.
Right. And if I may.
Yeah.
I'm chair. I suggested moving to that next evening, if possible, as opposed to forward, because I think our staff are already pushing hard to meet the deadline of getting the budgets done in order to present that meeting and the following one. So if we could just move it back, as opposed to forward. And I know the chair really, you know, wants to be here for such a discussion.
So just that next night?
Yeah, just the next night, the Thursday night.
It works for me.
Yeah.
So you're off that?
Wendy's okay?
You're off.
I will be poorly underdressed, as I will be coming from work. I will be poorly underdressed as I will be coming from work. Um, in order to be here on time, I would have to come straight there, so just.
Right, and that's okay.
It's thankfully not a televised meeting.
Oh, great.
When I come in a little bit inappropriately dressed, please excuse me.
Okay, so we're gonna, we'll be moving that to the.
Yeah, so November, November sixteenth.
Thursdays and sixteenth.
Just no headwinds, right?
Yeah. A bunch, a massive bunch of that. Okay, thank you for accommodating my schedule. Um, okay, you, you, on to reports. Uh, Mr. Lovick, athletic advisory, have you met it yet, or do you have one coming up?
We have, uh, meeting coming up on Tuesday, right before the LPO forum.
Oh, the twentieth, okay.
Twenty-fourth.
And, um, did you guys, um, select a student yet, or are you?
I have not had an opportunity to talk to Mr. McCullough yet.
Okay.
I will do that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ailes, finding us.
It's a great meeting, I have nothing to report. Um, we just talked about a lot of things that I, still there's a learning curve. Um, we did refer back to, they did refer back to that spreadsheet that I told you about, um, the last time, you know, that everything's getting put into. Um, and then there was a conversation about the forum that had occurred prior to the meeting, um, and then, you know, the, in the town meeting.
The special town meeting.
Special town meeting, so.
Yeah, okay. Um, school council, does anybody, I have one, but they, does anybody else?
The high school met today.
Okay. Yes. You can go first.
The high school, and, um, after that long discussion of the, the track, there was, excuse me, a presentation by Sandy LaSurtin, Pete McCullough, um, asking the school council, giving a presentation on naming the track. They had recommended, um, for the field, they would like to propose that it be named McCarron Field due to, um, Miles J. McCarron, um, and all the support McCarron's family has had since then, and they, they had a nice write-up on all of that. And then, um, the track to be named, and I'm sorry, I didn't write down his name, um, he was an educator in the district for twenty-some years, he did the track. Anybody know his name?
He was prior to my time, um, athletic director as well, I think.
So he was Lunenburg resident, he spent his entire career teaching in Lunenburg, um, he continued to support the track and field events for after, so they would like to name the track after that. The group that was there is, would like to recommend approval for that, and they'll have to go through all the appropriate channels, and now that we've had that discussion, they'll have to come to us and the parks department, I suppose? I'm not sure.
That was the discussion department.
Come to us. I, I know they were coming, but, um.
They were.
They went to the parks department already, didn't they?
Yes, they did.
They are.
Presented that one.
So it'll be coming to us shortly.
Have you gotten a request for them to come and present to us?
It starts with the school council. With existing facilities.
Oh, and it's.
The name of existing facilities begins with the recommendation of the building.
Principal.
Associated with, yeah, principal and then the school council.
Yeah.
So they'll be coming to us.
And then that recommendation comes up to the school committee.
Um, and then MCAS results were discussed, and we also read over the district goals again, the mission, vision, and everything for all the, the participants there, and there was a nice bit of discussion around goal three, which was the curriculum, and they talked about what the teams had done last Tuesday with the professional development, and the social studies and math teams working on the can-do descriptors and statements to have a document for parents so they can understand what the, um, what all these changes are for that, when the student finishes a certain grade, what a parent can expect their student to be able to accomplish. And then, um, both ELA and Science reported they were making progress and updating the curriculum. They felt they made very good use of their time during that professional development. So that was the, that was their discussion, yeah.
And, um, okay, so I attended the one at Turkey Hill this afternoon as well. Um, we went over the penny wars and the, um, how much they made, their field trips that they might be spending on, an in-house museum of science, Derbridge, Moose Hill Reservation this year is new for fourth grade. Um, they went over Nature's Classroom, where, um, they had a great time, and sixteen actually stayed at Nature's Classroom East, as they call us, and they did a bunch of, um, different activities, and were out and about a lot. Um, Professional Development Day was discussed as well, um, and they all enjoyed that a great deal, um, especially interacting with, uh, other teachers from different schools, because I guess they don't typically do that. Uh, parent-teacher conferences are, um, November first and seventh, and, um, they're going to be opening up their pick-a-time Friday. Um, report cards go home on the eleventh, the ninth of November. All grades are receiving, um, report cards this year. Um, and some, they will not have narratives in there because there will be conferences, so don't expect any long narratives about your child, because you will be talking to them directly about your child. Um, Score One Art will be going home, they've already done their pictures, now they're going to be placing their orders, and they should be in by December first. Girls on the Run, twenty-six girls, um, wouldn't have band, Tuesday, Monday and Thursdays, seventeen students, chorus, sixty-two students for fourth grade and thirty-four for fifth, and they have the big sips, little sips program going on, thirty high school students involved. They're very excited that eight of them are gentlemen. So.
That does.
Um, I think that, that, uh, we're talking about what we're going to be raising money or spending raised money on. We're going to try to have goals, um, they're going to look into mobile cards, they think, they think we might need to raise money for that, um, and maybe only limited to one field trip for a grade, um, and we want to look into how we can prepare for the demographics changing in town, um, so, and the addition of a possible sixth section for third grade next year in the budget. So that was. It was very, we covered a lot in an hour.
You danced.
Yeah.
I just wanted to jump in because I know last year, um, we want to remind everyone that pick-a-time opens up, it fills up really quickly. If you're unable to get a, a scheduled meeting with, within the slots that are offered, you call and arrangements will be made, because every parent that needs to meet, wants to meet with their teachers, that will be accommodated. So I think there was some confusion about that by parents, but the, the teachers will do that, um, so just if, if the slots get filled up and you call and get another one.
And Mrs. Champagne is going to send out an email that says if you need more than the ten minutes scheduled, please arrange for another time slot other than the pick-a-time, because the pick-a-time is for the ten minutes, and they have, everybody goes based on that ten minutes, and some people run over. So if you really think you need the more than ten minutes, contact the teachers directly and schedule it outside of the pick-a-time. Some will be customizing and actually spending more than their six hours there by choice, but that is going to be available, they will make themselves available.
So for middle school, we are meeting on Tuesday, and I misspoke, the athletic advisory is meeting on Wednesday of next week. Um, I'll make us for, uh, school advisors starting Tuesday.
Okay.
Right for the forum.
Okay. Um, PTO, you guys, do you guys have a meeting?
Uh, yeah, we actually had a meeting on, on Monday, just this past Monday. Um, there were several new or newly returning faces, so people who hadn't seen before, or I'd just seen at the previous meeting, so we really appreciate that attendance. Um, the bulk of the meeting was superintendent comms sharing enrollment and strategic plan, a lot of the information we've seen here at school committee. I did get the number for Cherry Hill, it was three hundred and fifty dollars from the Cherry Hill. Um, the building challenge from the Miles for Miles event, Turkey Hill Elementary did win the building challenge, but as in most years, it was very close with the primary just at one-thirty, so one-thirty-six to one-thirty. Always down to those last numbers.
The wallet that was thrown, I know.
I know. We got a lot of positive feedback from the Miles for Miles, we really appreciate the support from the community. Um, the food truck was very positive, we know we really enjoyed.
Sounds of thunder.
I give it some another shout out.
That's amazing.
Stayed open for all the volunteers who were working and.
The coffee shop, was the coffee good though?
I didn't try the coffee, I heard the espresso was really strong, but that was a good thing in that person's perspective, so there you go. Um, people really enjoyed the taekwondo demonstrations, and Master Kim did some nice warm-ups with the bicycle participants and the, the kids' fun run and the games for the kids that were out, that really helped, um, keep everyone occupied when there was downtime in between races. The next event for PTO will be on November sixteenth, that's Barnes &amp; Nobles, um, they're trying to coordinate with Applebee's on that same date, so then you can have some dinner and go to Barnes &amp; Nobles and.
Nice.
And have, have some fun.
And what time does that start?
I do not know that time right now. I know it'll be in the evening, and I would say.
My guess is four to nine.
It's often like.
Yeah. But, um, now that you said, if you can't get to the Barnes &amp; Nobles, you can take the online code, and you can always order things online. So all that information will be popping up on PTO's Facebook and website and all of our, our outlets for that.
Including Cheesecake Factory cheesecakes.
They'll, they'll be there, but, yeah, go ahead, enjoy. Uh, the next meeting will be at seven PM in the middle school project room on November thirteenth, and our featured guests are the building principals. I hope to see you there.
Okay. We have not had a capital planning since the last one, our next one is the fourteenth of November at five o'clock. So topics for future discussion.
The only thing I had was, um, in thinking about what we changed from last year to this year, um, any new positions that we opened up in the district, um, I think we added a great level in, uh, the dean of students, I just wanted, uh, some feedback on how those, how that was going.
Okay.
Um, you know, how are those positions working out, how is that helping across many buildings, so.
So feedback on the added positions.
Yeah, feedback on the added positions, just in terms of the benefits.
The other thing I'd like to see us discuss is naming policies. Not necessarily policy or state, I mean, perhaps looking at what it is and just a discussion about what we feel our role is and the extent of our role.
Um, as a full committee?
Yes.
Okay, so I know that's already on the policy, so, okay.
It is, but I would.
Is it helpful, I don't know this answer, is it helpful to look at what other school committees have done in this area for policy to give us some guidance? I know I feel very uncomfortable, you know, when we have these discussions about naming, because it puts us all in a, not in an awkward place necessarily, but we're never going to make everybody happy with our decision, so is that, is there precedent with that?
When we put, when the naming policy was originally put in place, we did, uh, do a review of, um, and requested policies from other districts and, and, uh, but I, we can do an updated, um, review on that.
Just curious to see that.
Is it on that, uh, is it on naming, um, policy?
I mean, if that's what, you know, as that topic, when Wendy said that, I thought, oh, gosh.
Or memorials.
Memorials, okay. Societally, we're moving to naming things.
Well, in our group, it seems, yeah.
No, but just if you look globally, every building is, you know, dedicated, named, and, and, you know, commercial buildings are obviously monetarily driven, but are we the only school district who's looking at this or having these opportunities, you know, or these, you know, um, this presented to us?
Okay.
Others might have a history of already naming things and have policies and things in place.
Right.
And how that's determined, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we did this originally when, um, the proposal came up for naming the gym.
The gym, right.
Decor.
Yeah.
For Dick Stackwitz. Um, that's when the, because we didn't have a policy on the books at all at that point in time, um, so that's been a period of years now, so we need to refresh that, we can reach out.
Okay.
Research that.
Anything else?
Do you have a timeline around that, just so?
Well, I, thinking sooner rather than later, because if we're going to have groups coming to us, seeking this out, I feel like we should be having some discussion in around that time as well.
Pace that.
Yeah.
So probably next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, yes, but not.
Or the one after.
Perhaps, perhaps.
The one after.
Aren't we in budget?
Yeah, we're in budget. So we're not, so there's no.
What do we have, school presentation?
I thought it was.
We already have those.
The following year.
Okay.
The following meeting.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
The next meeting, definitely, there might be some space in the following one, given the number of budgets that are, I think it's the smaller budgets.
Okay, okay.
The bigger ones for summer.
IT, um, nurse.
Yeah, the December one, the first one, and early December is usually a big one.
That's the, all of them, that's the, all, it's all the schools.
Yep.
And athletics, too.
Yes.
Okay. We'll do it.
Okay.
We got it.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to a adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I make a, um, I.
I make a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn, I can say it.
Second, second.
All in favor?
I.
Wow.